That's good.
Mr. Chair, other than Mr. Jackson, I think we've promoted the other nine members. Thank you.
All right, so let me pull my agenda up and we will get this started. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's planning and zoning meeting for November 1st, 2021. I can't believe it's already November. On tonight's agenda, we have two public hearing items, one information report, one new correspondence item, and four other items for consideration. Like to welcome to our attendees and roll call of attendance, please.
Commissioner Hofree. Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner Cohen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Broyles.
Here.
Commissioner Clayton.
Here.
Commissioner Deppler.
Here.
Commissioner Jackson. Chair Beatty.
Here.
Councilmember Brost.
Here.
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's here. Can I get approval of the minutes from last meeting? Or I guess let's first do an approval of the minutes from October 1st.
I move that we accept the minutes from October 1st.
Motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Councilman Brost. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. And can I get an approval of the minutes from October 18th? Motion by Commissioner Broyles. Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Abstain.
Commissioner Cohen, and who was the other one?
Deppler.
Okay, thank you. All right, motion passes. Is the depart- I'd also so like to welcome our new Assistant Director of Planning and Parks, Ms. Melanie Ripeto. She is on as night. So, welcome again, Melanie.
Pleasure to see you all. I'm excited to join the team.
And does the Department of Planning have any opening remarks?
Other than to introduce Ms. Ripeto, no, I do not, but thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. One second. All right, so we have, oh, sorry, public comment session. If there is anyone in attendance who would like to speak to the non-public hearing items tonight, now is the time to speak. If you would like to, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom. And we will, and the Department of Planning will promote you and allow you to speak. Seeing no requests, we will move to the first public hearing. In the city of Wildwood, public hearings are truly intended to accept comments, questions, and comments and questions concerning the advertised items. Since these requests are being presented at a public hearing, no action is planned on them tonight, and consideration of these is to be taken no earlier than December 6, 2021. This approach ensures that members of the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear all opinions before taking any action. The city's Department of Planning will address the comments, questions, and concerns that are raised tonight and will include them as part of its formal recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The commission will allow all parties adequate time to present their presentation. Those in attendance via the Zoom webinar platform should use the raise hand feature to indicate you wish to speak at this hearing or indicate in the chat feature that you would like to speak. A team member will add you to the list of speakers. Then that will be then be communicated to me, the chair, and I will invite you to speak when it is your turn. In addition, information on this item can be found on the city's website at www.cityofwildwood.com. The commission would like to thank you for your cooperation and participation at tonight's hearings. All right. Our first public hearing item on Babler Park Drive. Mr. Vunich or Mr. Newberry?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if you would allow Mr. Newberry to read the request into the record.
All right.
PZ 29-21 1045 Babler Park Drive, care of David Spitznagle, 1045 Babler Park Drive, Wildwood, Missouri, 63005. A request for a change in zoning from the FPPS Floodplain Park and Scenic District and PS, excuse me, and PS Park and Scenic District to the FPNU Floodplain Non-Urban Residence District and NU Non-Urban Residence District upon a parcel of ground that is 6.53 acres in size, which is located on the west side of Babler Park Drive, State Route BA, north of its intersection with Pond Road. The property was previously part of Babler State Park, but was sold into private ownership by the state of Missouri. Such sale and now the property's used for residential purposes necessitates the request for zoning change. Ward one.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich.
Mr. Chair, I'm trying to find petitioner's representative. I've asked for those attendees if they're here to represent Mr. Spitznagle, to please identify themselves. I did talk with Mr. Spitznagle, a late Corey McDonald. All right. While I promote Mr. Corey, would you, we have a slide presentation we prepared regarding the site.
All right, go ahead and show that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The department will begin its presentation with just an aerial image of this area of Wildwood. The property is identified by this this blue colored mine. The parcel is an odd shape. This is State Route BA or Babler Park Drive, and this is where my cursor is, is State Route 109. The first image of the site is a view looking to the northwest on Babler Park Drive from the petitioner's driveway entrance. The next image is standing at the same location, looking to the southeast on Babler Park Drive. This image is standing farther to the west, looking toward Babler Park Drive from the midpoint of the petitioner's driveway. And this photograph was taken standing across the street from the property on Babler Park Drive towards the property's frontage on the roadway. This image is what photograph was taken standing at the entrance to the driveway, showing the eastern side yard area, and the car over here in the home is the neighboring property. The subject home is here. This is another view, standing again at the driveway entrance, showing the front yard area. The home can be seen beyond these trees. And then the next few images are just of the home itself, just to show the residential character of the property. This is the side elevation on the southeast side of the dwelling, so that there are also some accessory structures on on the property. This is that same elevation from a different angle. This is the other side elevation of the home. And then this is the rear of the home with the accessory structure, the carport. And this view is standing at that same location as the previous photograph, looking toward the rear yard area, and again, the accessory structure here. And with that, Mr. Chair, that concludes the department's slideshow presentation photographs of the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Would the petitioner like to speak?
Yes, good evening, and thank you all for allowing us to join this evening. My name is Dave Spitznagle. I bought 1045 Babler Park a little over a year ago, a year ago last July from a family that had been there for almost 40 years, I believe. Beth and I bought the property in June, the end of June, we closed 2020. And the house is a beautiful quaint little house on six and a half acres. You saw it. It's a six and a half, six and a half acres long and one acre wide. So it's that's a long sliver of property. That's that's strikingly beautiful to us, and we have a creek running right through the middle of it. And then on the back part, what we call the back 40 is a little is a hill that goes into Babler Park. Beth and I have plans to improve the property and and maintain the the historical significance of the of the house and the property itself as best we can. And that obviously will require the rezoning, which is why we're here tonight. I also just recently moved my business here to Wildwood a little bit less than about a year ago today. So I'm all in here in Wildwood and and I and I hope we get a positive outcome here. That's all I have. If anybody has any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you. So, Mr. Vunich, I assume because it was owned by the state park, we just have to update it to reflect that the park sold it and any other concerns about the property?
Well, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, with its current zoning, the PS Park and Scenic District, Mr. and Mrs. Spitznagle cannot proceed forward with their plans to do a building addition because, again, single-family dwellings of a private nature are not authorized in the Park and Scenic District. And so changing the zoning to the NU Non-Urban Residence District is a key for them to improve the property.
Thank you. When was this sold by the state?
My recollection, Mr. Chair, is in the late 1970s.
Has it just held on to the Park and Scenic designation because no one's filed to change it?
Exactly, sir. This is the first time, and again, the Spitznagels are hoping to improve the property.
Sounds good.
I do believe that my neighbor, Tom McCracken, had the same issue. I'm not sure, probably 20 years ago, he did addition on his house, and he had to do the same.
Gotcha. Makes sense. Any other questions from the commission? And any questions or comments from the public? Please use the raise hand feature, and we will promote you. Seeing none, can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Motion by Commissioner Deppler, second by Councilman Brost. Roll call vote, okay here? Or I'm sorry, voice vote?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, can I get a voice vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any abstentions? Motion passes, and this public hearing is closed. Thank you to the Mr. and Mrs. Spitznagle.
Thank you very much. Can we drop off now, or did?
Yeah, you're welcome to drop off. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all, Joe. Appreciate everything. Thank you.
And our next item?
PZ 27-21 Johann S. Sanchez, 2511 Hickory Manor Drive, Wildwood, Missouri, 63011. Care of Nikki Rosario, Sun Pro Solar, 8124 Buncombe Road, Caseyville, Illinois, 62232. A request for a conditional use permit, CUP, in R3 10,000 square foot Residence District with a planned environment unit, street address 2511 Hickory Manor Drive, locator number 23V421021 for the installation of roof-mounted solar panels, which are to be placed on the rear of the dwelling, but due to the lot having double frontage, are to be situated as to be visible from the adjoining roadway, Taylor Road. This request is to be reviewed in accordance with Chapter 415.140, R3 10,000 Square Foot Residence District Regulations of the City of Wildwood Zoning Ordinance, which establishes standards and requirements for the installation of solar panels. The requested permit is required due to the panel's placement on the rear-facing area of the roofs of the dwelling and would be visible from the adjoining roadway. Ward five.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm sure you all recall that at our at our October meeting, this particular matter was first introduced at the public hearing. At the conclusion of the slide presentation, there was requests for more information provided prior to the public hearing in terms of photographs of the site. The public hearing was held open to accommodate this particular request and the introduction of additional photographs. And with the permission of the chair, I'll go through the photographs we've taken in addition to the ones you saw in October, and then again, be available for any questions or comments regarding the request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich, and if you can share your photographs, that would be much appreciated.
You're welcome, sir. And so in this particular case, what Mr. Newberry and I attempted to do is kind of walk you from south to north along not only the sidewalk area associated with the city's right-of-way, but also from the nearest shoulder to the property and then across Taylor Road from the property. The first slide shows the Etherington Road sidewalk area, and this is a view northeast toward the dwelling. The dwelling is through the thicket of leaves there. Thank you, Mr. Newberry. And then again, just kind of walking from south to north, we're nearing the Amarin, excuse me, AT&amp;T's U-verse boxes, and again, you can see the dwelling in the center of the slide and the vegetation around it. The area of beige is the rear roof where proposed solar panels are to be placed. Again, heading from south to north, we're nearer the AT&amp;T U-verse box boxes, and again, looking toward the east, northeast at the dwelling. Just to close up, maybe focus in on the dwelling and the roof area. Here, just a different angle, more straight on or perpendicular to the rear roof, again, in the vicinity of the sidewalk, but starting to edge toward the nearest shoulder of Taylor Road.
Mr. Chairman. Oh, Mayor Boland?
Yes, thank you. And, Mr. Vunich, my apology for interrupting your presentation. So Joe was doing exactly what was asked at the last meeting, but in looking at these photographs with all of the leaves, I think it would be better if we got a worst-case scenario presentation, and given that we are now within weeks of a leaf fall where we can get that, I would move to postpone to the December meeting so that the photographs can be obtained and show the commission what the residence and the planned panels would look like at that point. So it's a motion to postpone for 30 days and to keep the hearing open for that purpose.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
All right, second by Commissioner Jackson. Voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, I oppose this. Any abstentions? Motion passes, nine to one.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Newberry would read the request in the record. We need to read the request in the record since we received a request for postponement today instead of in advance of the meeting. So with your permission, Mr. Newberry, I'll take a minute or two here.
Okay.
PZ 23 and 23-20, 23A-21 Westridge Commons McBride Bear Land Company LLC, care of Jeannie M. Allmiller, 17415 North Outer 40 Road, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63005. A request for a modification from the workplace district designation of the Town Center Regulating Plan to the Neighborhood General District on a 2.51 acre tract of land consisting of five lots of record, all being located on the north and south sides of New College Avenue between State Route 109 and West Avenue. Street addresses 17001, 17002, 17005, 17006, and 17010 New College Avenue. St. Louis County Locator Numbers, 24V420362, 24V420351, 24V420313, 24V420340, and 24V420331. Accompanying the aforementioned regulating plan modification is a request for a change in zoning from the amended C8 Plan Commercial District, PZ 14-01 McLean Partners, to the R6A 4,000 square foot Residence District with a planned residential development overlay district for the same tract of land. These requests seek to modify the use of the subject tract of land from its current vacant and undeveloped commercial status to a residential type of use. Proposed use: a total of 18 attached single-family dwellings on individual lots of record with common ground and required public space areas. Ward eight.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich?
Again, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, just as was noted a few minutes ago, the Department of Planning received a request from Ms. Allmiller this Monday morning requesting a postponement to allow further time to review the proposed conditions associated with the favorable recommendation. Given that a policy of the Planning and Zoning Commission is to receive postponements in advance of the day of the hearing, the department is respectfully requesting a motion to postpone.
All right, and I assume a 30-day postponement is sufficient for them?
I believe so, sir. The letter did not set a specific date, but I have already communicated with this Allmiller via email. We're trying to set up something for this week.
All right. Can I get a motion to postpone this? Motion by Commissioner Helfrey, second by Commissioner Clayton. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda?
Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the item is a request for the ongoing operation of an existing telecommunications tower and facility authorized by PZ 25-97 Sprint Spectrum LP, Parenthetical, Mariner's Retreat Center. A conditional use permit, CUP, in the NU Non-Urban Residence District, east side of State Route 109, south of Old State Road, under a one-year renewal allowed by the existing conditions of this site-specific permit. This particular property is located in Ward six.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Mr. Newberry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as Mr. Vunich just read into the record, this item is relating to a 115-foot tall existing monopole telecommunications facility located off of State Route 109. The conditional use permit that governs the facility does require an annual review, as many commission members are familiar with. To begin this review, the department conducted a site visit last week to observe the condition of the site and found it to be in very good condition, as has been consistent over the past years for this site. Therefore, the department is recommending to the Planning and Zoning Commission that the facility be renewed for an additional one-year period. The department cites in its report the importance of this facility to provide service along this major corridor, as well of it, as well as its general compliance with the governing conditional use permit. So with that, again, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the department's recommending the one-year renewal of this site and more available for any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Any comments? I'll go ahead and ask if, since they've had a fairly good track record of maintaining it, is there an is it possible to give them a longer than a one-year renewal? Is there interest in that?
Mr. Chair, what I would suggest is an action on the current request to ensure the renewal, if the commission is agreeable, is approved. And then as we approach the next renewal in November of 2022, we'll ask the Mariner's Retreat Center to submit a letter requesting an extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Boland?
Yeah, respectfully, I would suggest we not do that. We are a city of environmentally conscious residents, and these towers are, they certainly serve a purpose, but they are not necessarily homogeneous with the environment, and things can change rapidly, as I think we've seen previously on this commission with respect to vegetation requirements that were required to disguise or at least ameliorate the appearance of these. So I would I would be adamantly against moving a consideration of a cell tower in Wildwood to anything more than a year, and frankly, I'd like to do it in six months or less. Thank you.
Can I get a motion on the floor? Councilman Brost?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Right, motion by Councilman Brost, second by Commissioner Deppler. Roll call vote? Or any discussion on the motion, sorry? Seeing none, roll call vote?
I have a question. So exactly what are we voting for now? Is this the thing that the mayor mentioned, or are we going with the original?
No, this is just to extend the CUP for another year.
Okay.
Ready for the vote, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Helfrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
No.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Broyles?
Yes.
Commissioner Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Deppler?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
Chair Beatty?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Mayor Boland?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Motion passes by a vote of nine to one. Next on the agenda.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, the next item is an overview of the City of Wildwood's Planning and Zoning Commission's progress on the execution of work program items for the calendar year 2021, Ward's all.
Thank you, Mr. Runich. Mr. Newberry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the department has prepared for your consideration a memorandum providing an update on the commission's 2021 work program. As stated in the bylaws, the commission is to have a work program for each year, and it has been practice of the department and the commission to provide an update at mid-year and at the end of each year regarding the adopted work program. The department just would like to identify a few items and not go line by line of the memorandum, but one of the major accomplishments of Planning and Zoning Commission in 2021 was the adoption of the update of the city's town center plan. Another major milestone was to identify the properties to be considered for the application of the special circumstances overlay district, of which a public hearing is held in June. A few other items the department would like to mention as part of the commission's progress in 2021 on its work program is the beginning of the review. And when I say beginning, I mean the, holding the public hearing regarding the update to the tree preservation and restoration code, as well as the process to consider amendments to the development and subdivision regulations of the city of Wildwood. And with that, the department would just conclude that it believes that the progress that the commission made in 2021 with the ongoing pandemic, as well as moving to one meeting a month, has been commendable, and thank you to each commission members who has assisted to move this work program forward. And with that, Mr. Chair, the department's available for any questions that commission members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Any comments or questions? Let's hear. Seeing none. We don't need to take any action on this, I guess, do we?
No, sir. This again is more for information purposes only. Thank you.
Thank you. In that case, let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Oh, sorry, Mayor Boland?
That's okay. Let me just look at the agenda again. I think there is actually a box shown on the agenda for a vote of some sort. If we don't need that, I think we should just vote to modify the agenda to remove that. If we do, then we should vote. I'm sorry, we have X A work program. I'm sorry, that's 2022, not 2021. My apology.
Okay. Yeah. Next item on the agenda is legislative changes to the regulations governing the architectural review board.
Mr. Chair, I would respectfully request the mayor provide his presentation at this time. Thank you.
No, it's good. Mayor Boland?
Thank you. And so just very quickly, as you know, we have an architectural review board. We call it ARB for short, and essentially is part of unifying the team of the city, much like the council reviews planning and zoning items from time to time, depending on what they are. The council, just in the last few weeks, has approved legislative changes in the city that will provide, or that do provide that decisions from our architectural review board will initially be reviewed by this commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and ultimately by the city council. These decisions by the ARB, as you know, oftentimes do pertain to aesthetic issues. And once, and we, when we had our development and zoning review committee meeting earlier, I made the comment that once something is built, it's, it's very difficult, if not impossible, to change it. And so it just makes clear that we should have checks and balances relative to these kinds of decisions. So it will involve that review. The other changes are that the votes will include the P and Z, this commission's appointee, which is currently Commissioner Cohen. So he will become a voting member, and the council's liaison to ARB, which is currently commit, council member Clark from Ward one, they will be voting members as opposed to simply sitting there as ex-official members and commenting without the right to vote. And then finally, because of that, the appointees will be made by the mayor and approved of the council as all their, all of their appointments are. So I will be appointing Commissioner Cohen, assuming everyone in the commission is good with him staying there, which I expect you are, at the next or upcoming council meeting to technically make that the case. So I'll end where I started, basically just a matter of making certain that, as we do with all of our other boards and commissions, that the, the decisions from the ARB are part of the team. Now, I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone hasn't.
So I guess in the past, the chair of this commission has appointed the members to the ARB and Historical Preservation Committee. Is that just because they are non-voting members? That this chair has had that privilege?
That's a great question, and I don't know the answer to that. The city attorney who authored the changes in the legislation is with us, and so I would ask him to answer how that is going to work going forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Chairman, in reviewing the provisions of the city code regarding to the architectural review bar, board, the ARB, the number of the Planning and Zoning Commission isn't necessarily referenced in the ordinance. The number from the Planning and Zoning Commission is really a liaison between, or historically had been, a liaison between the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Architectural Review Board, and had no formal status on the actual board itself. And what this change to the city code does is actually gives the member of the, the Planning and Zoning Commission member appointed to the ARB a formal status on the Architectural Review Board, as well as being a voting member.
So John, but I think his question related to the chair of this commission, Chair Beatty, his and his role with respect to that appointment versus the mayor's role and approval of the council. So has that changed, and if so, how and why?
The change is to actually having the mayor make the appointment, and the reason for that is appointments to boards and commissions per the city's charter is to be made by the mayor with the consent of the board, or with the consent of the council. I'm sorry.
Okay. That makes sense. So, oh, Mr. Runich?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I didn't mean to interrupt your statement, but we'll also, when space is available on agenda, be changing the bylaws and bringing them to the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess so. Well, I guess it's not really that important, but does anyone else have any questions about this change? Seeing no questions or comments? Thank you, and we'll move on to the next item. So our discussion of the work program for calendar year 2022.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as Mr. Newberry noted, with the adoption of the Planning and Zoning Commission's updated bylaws in 2019, one of the new items that was added to those bylaws was a work program for each upcoming year, in this case, 2022. Tonight, the Department of Planning is presenting to the Planning and Zoning Commission members a draft of the 2022 work program. As you can see, it may not be as lengthy or long as what 2021, the 2021 plan had when presented at the end of 2020. But as you can see from our Development and Zoning Review Committee, we are starting to see a great number of potential proposals that require rezoning, a conditional use permit, or et cetera. So for the most part, the work program for 2022 attempts to address those outstanding issues that the Planning and Zoning Commission started in 2021, which includes the Special Circumstances Overlay District, the Tree Preservation and Restoration Code, the Subdivision and Development Regulations, as well as providing support to the Watershed Erosion Task Force, and updating the Development Manual from the action of the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2021. Therefore, tonight, the department is presenting this in draft form. If there are any comments, questions, or additions, or deletions, certainly that would be appreciated from the department from, by the commission. And if there are no changes, the department would respectfully request a motion and second and approval of the work program. The department's available for any comments or questions at this time, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Runich. Commissioner Helfrey?
Um, thank you, Chair. I just had one question, and that was, I noticed that on this particular document that you've given us to read, it says, "Update all handouts as a low priority." And the one that we just went over for 2021 stated that this would be addressed in 2022. So is it still low, or is it going to be down in 2022? That's my only question. Thank you.
Well, certainly, the department would like to achieve all of these with the participation and support of the Planning and Zoning Commission. As time has availed itself, we have done some updates to some of the materials, just in terms of format, but not content. The intent is to bring changes in content to the Planning and Zoning Commission, not necessarily ask you to basically review style. So we'll do our best in 2022, Ms. Helfrey, and to the rest of the commission members to get that information to you.
Well, the, the, the work that the Town Center Update Team did, and to all of the changes that were made by that group, have all the, the city's documents regarding any of those changes been updated already?
Some of the items have been updated, those that are critical to the development community and our residents, meaning the neighborhood design standards, the architectural guidelines, the regulating plan, and in conjunction with the regulating plan, the boundary map. The Development Manual is kind of the one shop stop for that information, and it's usually been something that has a little bit more of an artistic or graphic flair associated with it. And as we put information into that, it is the intent of the department to have the Planning and Zoning Commission review it and eventually adopt it. The adopted development manual then will be available online or reviewed by anyone and used at any time, and we'll do a few paper copies for those that may not have access to the internet or prefer such.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Runich.
Any other discussion? Can I get a motion to approve this plan? Commissioner Helfrey? Seconded by Commissioner Broyles. Any discussion? Roll call vote then?
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Broyles?
Yes.
Commissioner Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Helfrey? Chair Beatty?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Mayor Boland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, the approval of the five-year capital improvement plan. Mr. Runich?
Again, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, each year, the Department of Planning presents to the Planning and Zoning Commission the five-year capital improvements plan. This presentation and consideration by the Planning and Zoning Commission is established by state statute, which is included in the department's report. Each year, the city of Wildwood has a very ambitious effort with regards to capital improvements, and 2022 is no different. Also, in conjunction with 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission is given the opportunity to look forward for the next four years beyond that particular time and see what the city of Wildwood is considering. The budget process by the city council is underway and moving very quickly. I believe the intent is to have a public hearing on this particular matter on November eighth, or a week from tonight. Therefore, with the public hearing scheduled on November eighth, the department is presenting the five-year capital improvements plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration and action. With that action, the city council will have the report available to it at the public hearing on November eighth. The department would note that there are a list of projects that have been identified that have a certain level of significance beyond some of the others. And if there are questions specific to the projects or the funding, I would defer those to our city administrator, Steve Cross, who has been integral in developing the budget with our finance manager, Don Kaiser, Mayor Boland, and our city council. So tonight, the department is presenting the five-year capital improvement plan, and it is for consideration and action. And I would say that the department is now available for any questions or comments, along with the city administrator. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Runich. Any que, any, yeah, any discussion? Um, I do have one thing. I'm not seeing, so I, you've got the pedestrian bridge at the manors and enclaves, but no money allocated towards it?
Mr. Chair, that project is underway and fully funded in 2021. So if we do not finish in 2021, which we do not expect to, we will do a purchase order and carry that funding forward. And I believe that purchase order, Mr. Cross, what is the terminology?
That is an encumbrance of those funds.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. And then I don't see anything about finishing the trail between the new park. I can't think of the name of it right now, but the one at the end of Pond Grover Loop connecting to Brightleaf.
Mr. Chair, what I would suggest is you defer to the strategic plan. This is a document that was recently adopted by the city council and led by Mayor Boland and others. And as part of that, there is a reference to that trail segment between Green Pines Park on the northern edge of Pond Grover Parkway and the new subdivision called Villages at Brightleaf. It has not been forgotten. It is just not within the window of the next five years.
That is very disappointing, too.
If it would make you feel less disappointed, there is a general category called future trail development, and we do have some money set aside for that in, let's see, oh, excuse me, that's future trail development, resurfacing repairs. My apologies. So for right now, the five-year window doesn't seem to include it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I failed to mention that Mr. Brown, our Director of Public Works, is here as well tonight, and And if you have any questions regarding roads, bridges, et cetera, he is our expert, and I would defer those to them. If there are no further questions, again, the department would respectfully request a motion and second and vote on this matter tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Depler?
So I'm, I'm assuming that the same situation that the chair brought up about the the refinishing of the end of the Birch Forest project, is that because it's a current project for two thousand and twenty-one?
Yes, Ms. Depler, that project is funded in two thousand and twenty-one. And at the upcoming city council meeting on Monday, November eighth, there will be a bill introduced for the contractor that has been selected for the construction.
Thank you.
Can I get a Commissioner Jackson?
Just curious, Joe. So if we approve the budget, do we still have to approve a contractor? Wouldn't you use a bid process? I mean, is that going to come back to us as well? Or if we're approving it, we've approved you to select to, you select through the city rules? I'm just curious about roles and responsibilities moving forward. That's why I asked it.
In regards to the Birch Forest turnaround, that particular item has been at the Planning and Parks Committee of City Council for a number of meetings through the, early the beginning of two thousand and twenty-one till now. The Planning and Parks Committee endorsed the project and the engineer, engineered plans for such that recommendation from the council committee went to city council and was also discussed there and endorsed. And as part of the city council action, authorized the bidding process to proceed. Bid documents and bid specifications were completed. They were advertised for approximately three weeks through the month of September, early October. The department received, I should say, the city received eight bids in response to that advertisement. And KJ Understall was the low bidder. That particular low bidder was presented again to the Planning and Parks Committee of City Council, which endorsed it. And then la, at the last city council meeting, the city council had this particular item under work session for action, and they endorsed the preparation of legislation for the KJ Understall to complete the project.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought I, maybe you misunderstood where I was going. I thought it would come back where we had to approve the contractor or the P and Z. That's not a role of us. Once we approve the budget, that's already done, right?
Yes, what
Okay, okay, we're done. I'm sorry. I got you.
I appreciate the question and be glad to answer any of them. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Can I get a motion? Commissioner Clayton? You're muted.
I was going to give you the motion.
Oh, state, all right. To approve, I assume, but I don't want to make that assumption.
Right.
All right, seconded by Commissioner Ward. Any more discussion? Roll call vote?
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Broyles?
Yes.
Commissioner Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Humphrey? Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Chair Beatty?
No.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Mayor Boland?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes nine to one. That concludes the agenda for tonight. So can I get a motion to adjourn? Made by Commissioner Broyles, seconded by Councilman Brost. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Any extensions? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.